Good, man. Well, listen, thank you for everyone that's here. Thank you for those that are logged in, those that are physically here in the office. Those of you that are actually be taking a look at this town hall later. Look, we are always excited to present to you not only what's been going on in Brooks and Davis. And, and, and our history when it comes to this real estate industry over this la- this last few months of this, um, this year, but we're excited about what, what's taking place in the real estate industry itself. So we're seeing a lot of big changes. We'll be able to touch on some of those things. But again, welcome, welcome, welcome for being here. You are invited to come in, visit with us at any time. Those of you that may be looking for new opportunities in the real estate field, again, you have an open invitation. Visit with Brooks and Davis. You have an open invitation to, to sit down, talk to myself, talk to Michael, or talk to anybody that's a part of this leadership team and growth. Um, again, we're excited. We're excited for all the teams that we've brought onto the brokerage firm, all the growth that we've seen. And of course, some of the amazing things that's taking place in the real estate industry. Please feel free to reach out, touch bases with us. And with no, with, with that being said, I'll bring back up our CEO, Michael G. Davis. All right, man. We definitely want to thank our, uh, co-founder and CFO, Mr. Larry W. Brooks, for all the great work that he does for Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm. Through all of these years, y'all, we celebrated seventeen years this year. You know, not many companies can say that they've been around that long. So that is something that we're definitely proud of. Uh, and here's to the next seventeen more years, uh, that we're gonna be going. All right. So again, welcome to the town hall meeting. Let's see, make sure my clicker work. All right, boom. All right. So welcome to the town hall meeting. I definitely want to start off, you know, we got some fun exercises, some fun, uh, things that we're gonna be doing. We're gonna be hearing for some, from individuals and some people about their experiences. So all of that's gonna be exciting. Uh, before we jump into that though, man, I definitely want everybody to understand at Brooks and Davis, we're very clear on what we believe. Right? We have very clear values. We have, uh, eight, nine values and shout out to our leadership team. As we worked very diligently to craft these values, to describe and, and to define who we are as a company. And as you see these values on the, on our screen, uh, what you'll notice is, is that there are really four components that we're really all about. And that's about commitment and personal growth, right? And you can see how we, how we feel about cha- uh, coaching you to commit, uh, coaching, how we feel about challenging you to commit. You know, all of that is about commitment and growth. Then you can see organizational excellence, right? We're, we're super serious about how we structure ourselves and how our culture and the innovation through our cultures. You see that we're about continuous improvement, about grow, about being a trendsetter in the industry. And then finally, about support and being a family-oriented environment. We're, we're super simple at Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm. I know sometimes it can seem, uh, cloudy. It can seem like it's, it's a lot of moving pieces. But at the end of the day, we're very simple. Commitment, personal growth, organizational excellence, continuous improvement, and a supportive and family-oriented environment. At the end of the day, that's what we believe and that is what we're about. All right. So now what I want to do is bring up one of our, uh, someone from our leadership team, Ms. Laverne Moore. And what she's gonna do is she's gonna help facilitate, we're gonna help facilitate a quick icebreaker. So, um, go ahead and come on up. Y'all give Laverne Moore, she's our, uh, head of recruiting. Uh, she handles our recruitment. She's, she's really excited about recruiting and she tends to like to tell people how excited she is. All right. So we're gonna get this, uh, this part set up. So well, everybody here, and if you're on Zoom and in the room, what I need you to do is pull your phone out and you're gonna scan this QR code.
Okay, everybody. Yay, we are here. And look, we have Brooks and Davis in the room today.
Yes.
And can y'all imagine seventeen years in the business and we still going strong? We made it through COVID and everything else and we still here. So scan that QR code, let's, um, scan the QR code and let's do icebreaker. Because we are like family and we want to get to know each other even more, connect even more and just, um, connect. So let me know when everyone has words. I should see them pop up on the screen.
It's coming. So everybody should be seeing that when you scan the QR code.
The word in, it said, what's one word you want your twenty twenty-five to feel like? Exactly explosive. We want our business to explode. We want to be successful in all of our transactions. And when we're talking to people, enormous, we want big things to happen. Yes, wealthy. Who don't want no wealth? We want them all be wealthy, successful. Yes, exactly. These are some great words. Thank you, everyone participating. And healthy, of course, you have to be healthy to do all of this. You have to be healthy. That goes along with making money. That goes along with just your mindset. And I don't see mindset on there, growth, but that's part of growth. As we do this business and we stay connected to Brooks and Davis, the coaching, the mentorship, the growth is what happens. We can prosper in doing all of that. And when you do your coaching sessions, you can get fulfilled on knowing what your next step are in doing this business. Uh, let's see, abundance, yes. Purposeful. We do definitely want to be purposeful in everything that we do so we can reach our goals. So these are some awesome words achieving. And of course, we want to achieve our goals. And that's one of the ways that we, when we, when you connect with your mentor and with the coaching sessions, achieve, you get to achieve your goals and you become successful and you can become wealthy. Uh, we help you to become prosperous and all of those things can change your life. It's just about being connected too, because we know that when you're in the room with these different, uh, people and engaging, it can change your life. You can grow. You can become successful and you can win. It can be actually a win-win situation. So boom, we can just come in and do that. Did I miss any words?
Oh, big, big.
Big, big. We want to think big. So when you think big and you have the mindset that you need to be a real estate agent, that's an entrepreneurial thing. So if you, if you have a job, because we work with people, whether it's part-time dual-career agents or full-time, it's just about being connected, being, um, thinking big. Because you definitely have to think right in order to be able to do both, but it can be done. What was the next word that came up? Energetic. Yes, energetic. We have to have, we have to have energy every day to do this. So you have to get up with the right mindset to achieve these things. And you can have energy regardless of what you feel like now, regardless of what you feel like whenever, keep these words on a board. Keep these words top of mind and you can achieve the success that you want. Any more words coming up? Did I miss any? Boom, wealthy, explosive, enormous, successful, growth. Yes, purposeful. Uh-oh, did I miss one that came up? Win, uh, fantabulous. Oh, I love that word. I use it all the time. Yes, I, I use that all the time, fantabulous, because we can be, be fantastic and things can be fabulous. This can be in our business, in our personal, in our everyday lives. If we keep these words at the top of mind, at top of mind. So, time Coach Mike?
Hey, you got some other stuff?
Okay, anybody else got some words to put out there?
I mean, I think that would be good. Does anybody want to share why they picked the word that they picked?
Yes.
Anybody? And on Zoom, if you're interested, just unmute yourself. We got the volume turned up. Shay, you got the volume turned up. We can hear.
I think Evan raised his hand. Let's, oh, I thought she.
I did.
Okay, go.
I, I put the word achieving out there. And it's interesting that when you talked about achieving, you associated it with a mentor.
Yes.
That's what I was thinking of, mentee mentor and how to achieve your goals.
Yes, and you can't do anything in this world alone. You can think you can, but you can't. You might want to, but you can't. It's always good to have a team of people, a family of people around you. So if you have a mentor, no, not if you have a mentor, because everyone should have a mentor unless you're a transactional B agent. If you don't know what that is, then you just need to give us a call. But in the meantime, in the meantime, you have access to coaches and mentors and you should definitely make sure that you are taking advantage of that. Okay, another word popped up and I don't see it. Yes.
I say energetic.
Okay, awesome.
For me, energetic is, you know, if you're talking in a low tone, low energy, always feeling tired. You're not gonna attract the, the things that are gonna make you successful. You're not gonna want to be getting up in the morning and doing the mundane, repetitive things that it requires to be either healthy or well.
Exactly.
Let's come with some positive energy.
That is so true. And the funny thing about it is when you first get up in the morning, you have to tell your mind, I'm gonna be energetic today. You have to tell your mind, I'm gonna fulfill my goals. And if you don't, then you starting the day off not the best as, you know, anyway, so. Anybody else have questions or want to throw a word out there? Run you?
Yeah, Runya. Go ahead. Let's hear from Runya.
Uh, one word I did not is, um, emotional intelligence. So as you go through, so you have some highs and some lows this year, I want to be able to maintain the emotional intelligence so I can win. So absolutely.
Okay, I'm sorry. Hold on, Runya. What am I doing?
Hey, you, you have to mute. You mute and then I can turn your. Completely off. Boom. Okay. All right, how about now?
Okay.
Go ahead, Runya.
Just saying, um, for me this year.
Okay, hold on. Let me mute first. Let's just do this. Nah, I got it right here. I was just on the wrong side.
All right, can you repeat that, please, Runya?
Absolutely. Hey Shay, um, I was talking about having this year, what it looks like for me for success is that emotional intelligence. Just having that emotional intelligence to deal with any situations. You know, as the market fluctuates, we have to have, um, that stability in our mental to, you know, deal with what comes at, uh, so just emotional intelligence is my word. I missed the QR code, sorry.
Could you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, well, I think you're intelligent anyway. I'm not trying to be funny or anything, but I think you're intelligent anyway. A lot of times though, we can get in our own head and stop.
Can y'all hear?
Well, I, I, there you go. I muted.
Can you hear me, Runya?
Yeah, I wasn't saying that we wasn't intelligent. Just emotional intelligence is the ability to cope with different situations as they come and have that maturity. It doesn't mean you're not intelligent. It just means that, um, you have what it takes and you are also displaying it.
Okay, that's a good one here. Thank you.
All right, anybody else on Zoom want to say something before we, uh, move on to the next segment? Cause we gotta do special things with the, with the audio, get our Zoom people to talk. All right, but look, give a round of applause for LaVon for, uh, for today. Thank you, LaVon.
All right.
Exactly, like you told.
So you can hold, you can hold him accountable. You're like, I know y'all can do it. I know y'all can do it. All right, so let's talk about, you know, why we're here, you know, today. Why, you know, what it's all about here at Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm. You know, at the end of the day, our mission and our vision, first of all, who knew what our mission, who knows what our mission or knew what our mission and our vision? What, who knows what the Brooks and Davis mission is? Who knows what the Brooks and Davis mission is? All the, everybody. Who knows what the Brooks and Davis mission is? Does anybody, nobody knows what the Brooks and Davis mission is? I know y'all, y'all, y'all better know, right? Who knows what the mission, the, who knew that Brooks and Davis had a mission and a vision? Even online. Who knew that Brooks and Davis had a mission or a, in a vision?
I do. I, I don't know the mission by heart, but I do.
If y'all didn't know, we gonna make sure that y'all know. Uh, there's a couple of, there's a couple of areas that they don't really have no choice in the matter. Like my leadership team is something that we share once a week during our leadership meeting. Um, the Brooks and Davis Signature Team is something that we share on a daily basis. Because at the end of the day, our mission and our vision is the heartbeat of who we are. You know, for my team leads that are here, uh, what I really want to encourage you all to, I want you all to, I want to really encourage you all to have a mission and a vision for your team. And not only just have it, I want to encourage you to have your, internalize it with your team. Make them repeat it. Brooks and Davis Signature, do I make y'all repeat our mission and our vision every time we meet?
Yeah.
Every day, every day with my team, they have to recite it. And we go around the circle because at the end of the day, we want to internalize it. Now, what you'll find out, when you begin to do that, you'll find out that you're gonna automatically begin to operate according to your mission and your vision, right? You're gonna, you're gonna find out that you're using your mission or your vision to explain some of the things that you do. Sometimes you're gonna find out when you're talking to cu- to clients, you're like verbatim, your vision or your mission will come out in that conversation. That's what we mean by internalizing, because your mission and your vision should be the North Star, all right? So now, we'll start off with the Brooks and Davis mission. So if you did not know what it is, it's on the screen right there. This is our mission, to create a greater experience for every stakeholder in the real estate community, while on our way to successfully sat, help satisfy one M. What does, what does one M stand for? One million. All right, to help satisfy one million real estate needs and develop a hundred and seventy-five K. What's a hundred and seventy-five K?
Thousand.
Thousand and a hundred and seventy-five thousand top-producing agents. Like that is the mission of Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm. It's not a goal. It's not, um, it's, it's, it's what, at the end of the day, it's what we're about. That's our mission. Now, who all wants to help participate in us achieving those, those astronomical accomplishments, right? Who all wants to participate in that? One million real estate needs. Can you imagine the kind of impact that the, this brokerage firm is gonna have when we can honestly, when we can say that we've satisfied a million needs, right? That's a major e- impact. And as a coach and as my team leads, right, my leadership, you know, when, as a brokerage firm, we can say that we've helped develop a hundred and seventy-five thousand top-producing agents. I mean, yeah, go ahead and clap, because, because y'all are included in that number, right? Everybody in this room is included in that number of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So it gives you an idea of what it is that we're looking to do as a brokerage firm. And then, so that's our mission. And then our vision is to be the number one real estate company in production and profitability. Come on, get them going, Mark. Mark said we gonna get them, we gonna get them going today at the town hall meeting, right? It's to be the number one real estate company in production and profitability. You know, if I used to say in the state, but we don't say that no more, because we want to be that period, right? Um, so as you can see, man, we're not here to play small. We're here to lead, we're here to lead the market. We're here to be leaders in everything that we do, so. So y'all, give it up for our mission and our vision. All right, good. So we got some, we got some special people in the bu- oh, uh-oh, I skipped one. Okay, I guess we'll do this first. All right, so Shay, it's your turn. I'm out, I'm out of order. But we gonna make it work. All right, so, uh, the next person I want to bring up from our leadership team, she's the glue that kind of keeps us together. She's in transition mode. The one thing that I can say about this young lady is, is that her original intent, for why she even started with us in an administration role was because she wanted to get her real estate license, right? And then fast forward, two years later, she achieved that goal.
Took me three and a half years.
Three and a half years.
I've been at Brooks and Davis for four.
Four years.
Four on Monday.
Prettily agree, which is our new thing that we're introducing, like sticking to it and having that perseverance. All right, so go ahead Shay. So you're gonna be handling the, the live poll. So your voice matters. So what we want to do is like with the, with the icebreaker, you want to scan the QR code. Everybody pull their phones out. Scan the QR code.
This is very interactive. What y'all think?
I like it.
I know y'all was tired of just sitting here and me talk.
So when you scan this QR code, uh, you're just gonna answer the question, what's the number one thing that you want more of? From Brooks and Davis.
Us. Let me get it on the screen. Yeah, scan the QR code. Everybody scan the QR code. Everybody scan the QR code? All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna replace it.
So we gotta pick at least one of them.
Gotta pick one, man. It look like Evan say just one.
We have one that's, that's the, the yellow.
Hey, look at us. Here we go.
All right, can everybody see that in Zoom room?
Yes.
All right, there we go. So it looks like we have marketing support being the number one thing you guys want. We have a tie for number two, which is hands-on coaching and recognition and shout-outs. And another tie for more leads, motivation and encouragement. Also, y'all don't think y'all need better training.
She's doing all right.
Right? That's, that's to know. Okay, well, that's, that's my part.
All right, we'll fix it. Don't worry. This is right there. We'll get, you can leave right there. We'll fix it when we, when we wrap up. All right, well, look, first of all, give yourselves a, a round of applause for participating in that exercise. Thank you. Way to show up today. Uh, oh, water? Anybody want some water? And that's the best water for you. Okay, all right. So now we're finna jump into our quick, our quick recap on season wins, all right? So, um, if this is your first town hall meeting, this is something that we do twice a month. So every six months, we do a town hall meeting that we kind of recap, recap some things and we like to celebrate some of the celebrations and things like that. So we're finna go in, into this mode. Also, I have some individuals that are gonna spend about, you know, thirty to sixty seconds. Well, you know, we'll, one, one to two minutes, just talking about their experience as new agents with Brooks and Davis. So we're gonna, you know, hear some testimonies and things from people as well. All right, so let's start off by saying, let's, first of all, let's start about welcoming some of our new faces. Uh, over the last six months, we brought in twenty-one new agents. Some of, some of those individuals are here in the building. They see. So we definitely want to welcome Kevin, um, and Myel.
Yes.
Myel, how you doing? Welcome. Our newest, I mean, she got, oh, I think we signed us somebody today. Somebody, so you almost was the newest. Myel, we almost signed, I think we signed her. But again, if you're on Zoom, I can't, I can't see who all is on Zoom. But we definitely wanted to, uh, welcome our new agents. We brought in twenty-one, uh, twenty-one new faces, the first half of twenty twenty-five, so. They don't need to be looking at me, man. They need to be looking at the screen, our new agents that we brought in, these smiling faces, right? All right, so twenty-one new agents chose culture, coaching and community. So we absolutely want to welcome them to the family. All right, also, we want to congratulate our top producers. Right? So between our top teams and our agents, they led us in thirteen point six million in closings over the, these first six months of twenty twenty-five. So give, we got a round of applause for, for the success, you know, just leading by example and, and you all being the, the examples for the entire organization to follow. Because at the end of the day, we're about doing what? Closing transactions. Like we're gonna hit that one million mark of satisfying needs. That's gonna come from closing transactions. And when you close transactions, you get paid, right? All right, so the goal is, um, you know, to, to, at some point, get everybody, get everybody on, on, on this podium, right, to just showcase your level of commitment and your level of, 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 um, engagement in this business and in this career. So again, let's do another round of applause, because it's hard. Basically, it's a market that we were working in today. It's challenging to achieve these things. So definitely want to, um, give people their flowers while they're doing it. So, but as you can see on the screen, so our producing team is the five-star team slash the J team. And then we have Yes to Real Estate, my man in the building. Congratulations to me and to, and then LaQuan Davis Realty Group. And then when taking a look at our, uh, our, from an agent standpoint, shout out to Mr. Andre Barord and his many successes as a senior agent with LaQuan Davis coming in at second and, and third. So congratulations and, and keep up the great work. Continue to be that example. Thank you so much. All right, so now, I'm excited. We get to hear, oh, no, that's not there yet. All right, so I also want to talk about how we showed up over these last six months. Uh, when it came to, we, so now, coming into twenty twenty-five, we begin to track our engagement. How, how you all are engaging, what you all are engaging with, to see what our numbers are looking like. So what we were able to quantify was, uh, over these first six months, we had two hundred and forty-two people participate in training, coaching or workshops at Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm. So give that a round of applause for that. So it shows that, you know, we don't just offer it, but you all are showing up for it as well. Um, also, within the first six months, and I don't think this is, I don't think many brokerages can, uh, can, um, say this, uh, over the first six months, we actually executed close to a hundred and twenty total sessions of training and support and mentoring, right? And, and that's approximately twenty sessions per month that Brooks and Davis puts on, um, to his brokerage firm. So I guess it does kind of make sense when a person says, what do you want more of, that they don't say training, because y'all can see that we're pushing a lot of it. Pushing a lot of it out there. So, uh, definitely want to shout out the administration staff. I know I have some of my admins that are on and some that are in the building, uh, as well as the leaders for helping us implement and push these things out. For being able to produce that amount of, of production. All right, here we go. That, this is the part that I was trying to get to. All right, so now, I'm excited because I have some people. I want you all to hear from some real agents, some real licensed agents about their experiences coming into Brooks and Davis. So I didn't really, um, put this in any kind of order, but what, since we have one person that's in the room and then three of them online, we're gonna set up the online and let those on Zoom go first and kind of tell their stories. Uh, and then Shay, we'll let you close it out, right? All right. The closer, the closer. And pretty much what they're gonna share with you all is their experience so far with Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm and how they've grown and how they've gained, okay? All right, so let's get it set up. Shay, I guess I need to mute myself. And then, all right, so I, I'll just pick a random person. Diane, you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first.
Before you get started, we definitely can't hear you. Is there a way that you can get in frame? Um, it's for your, your face. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, can you hear me? Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to be here with Brooks and Davis and five-star team and the J team. Um, when I came, the, the reason why I switched brokerages, uh, the main reason was the, my commission split. So it, I felt as though, uh, Brooks and Davis offered a better financial, uh, path for me. Um, and I needed to keep more of what I earned to reinvest in my business. Um, and at the time, I didn't even know that I wanted to switch brokerages. But, uh, my husband met Jackie's brother at a Harley, uh, no, the. But, uh, my husband met Jackie's brother at a Harley, uh, no, the BMW dealership. And they became friends. And he came over to the house one time and we're talking, and he found I was a realtor. And he was like, you need to get in contact with my sister Jackie. She's doing marvelous things at her brokerage. And, um, she'll, she'll teach you well or whatever. So I got in contact with Jackie. I came to a meeting, um, at the Brooks and Davis office. And the training was awesome. We were going through, uh, Jackie was doing a question-answer, um, scenario. And then we was going through, um, scenarios with buyers and sellers. So one of us would be the buyer, the other person would be the seller. Uh, the agent, I mean, the listing agent, and then the buyer or seller. So we went through that and answering questions and things like that. And so it was great. And the, the, the team, the, the camaraderie, it was just there. And I just clicked with everybody. And, um, the, and the reason why I'm still here, it's not just because of the commission. It's you are actually living up to what you're trying to do in your mission and your vision. Um, the training is astronomical. The, um, the family-like, family orientation. It feels like everybody is a family and we're working together, trying to lift everybody up and be supportive. Michael, you're, you train very well. Jackie, uh, Lakendra, it's just, all of y'all are just so, so great with the teaching and the things that, the tools that you give us to be successful. And I know that you want all of us to be successful because you're out there, you're doing it. We have coaching sessions every week. Um, there's something every day. One of the other, uh, things that I experienced when I first came on was the first-time homebuyer seminar that you had. Um, and that was, uh, giving us, uh, outreach to the community and helping people that don't know about, um, buying a home and wanting to get a home. And everybody was there, working together. We had credit repair, you had mortgage lenders. It was just something that was out of this world that I haven't seen before, not at the brokerage that I was at before. Um, let me see, what else did I have? You, we have access to leads as well, so you, you, you help with that. And one of the things that I put on the, um, second question was marketing support. I mean, having leads is great, but I also wanna be able to be out there and do it myself and, uh, get leads organically on my own, going out there in the community. And y'all teach us how to do that. Uh, Jackie is, um, very professional and helping us with staying with the, uh, up on the laws and, uh, regulations that Trek put out. And it's just us having, um, access to every last one of you. Uh, I've, I've done open houses for, for Andre, and it's just that you're, we're, we're there to help each other. And I love it. So that's why I'm still here.
Awesome. Alright, thank you so much, Diana. Um, Ashanti, are you ready, ma'am?
Alright, you have.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Or good afternoon? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Uh, so yes, um, I'm Ashanti Riggs. And so I am also a part of the five-star team, J, J-team. And my specific, um, talking point was about, as a new agent. And the thing is, I came to this team immediately after, uh, passing my exam. Um, and it started off with familiarity. So I prayed about it. And over the, I think, two weeks or so, I did my research to see what other agents or other people that I knew who were agents were experiencing with their agency and all these different things. But in the midst of prayer and the character of the people that I already knew that was a part of the team, which was Michael, um, and Lakendra, and then I had an opportunity to meet with some of the other ladies as well. And just continuing to pray about it, I found peace with making the, the decision to be a part of this brokerage. Um, and since I've been a part of the team, even though I have nothing to compare it to, I can tell that it was a reason why God brought me to this team compared to some of the horror stories that I've heard, which is not my story, thank God. Um, but I can say that there is a genuine care and support from this team. Um, and like Diane, I, everyone that I've met have been very kind, very supportive. Um, the positive energy, I'm a person who thrives on positive energy, um, and encouragement. And so they, I, I get an abundance of that from the people that I am connected to on this team. So even with life being life, I even give prayer from time to time. Whatever I need, I feel that there is a genuine care for my well-being and making sure that I am successful in every way.
Thank you, Ashanti. Uh, is Sharona good on?
I don't, I don't think it is. Or, that's Khadija.
Okay, go ahead, um, Shay. We'll let Shay go.
So, why, why I'm with Brooks and Davis?
Well, why, okay, so the reason that I wanted Shay to talk is because Shay had an experience with Brooks and Davis prior to getting her real estate license. And then she got her real estate license. And then she was able to see the, the other side of, as a licensed agent, right? So she literally has, from the execution side of things, how we're giving it as a brokerage. But then she also has it as the agent side of things, how she's receiving it as an agent. So I'll just share her experience being licensed, you know, officially doing it kind of around February this year. November last year, okay, so between November last year, less than a year, being licensed and really getting into, you know, uh, kind of like a dual-career agent type of role, I wanted her to speak about her experience. So go ahead, Shay.
Alright, so, uh, let's see. I, I met Brooks and Davis through Lala. Um, in my previous relationship, she helped, um, you know, those people purchase their home. And I was like, Lala, I think I can do that. She was like, you definitely can, girl. And I was like, okay. And then, so then she told me about the employment opportunity. Um, that's when I met Mr. Davis and Mr. Brooks. And honestly, from there, uh, it felt like I was at home. Uh, I always felt like our values align. Like, I have a strong passion for helping people. I've known that since I was young. Um, and I feel like our values align. And I feel like in other careers, like, that's, that was, it became a huge thing for me. Like, I don't like doing stuff just because somebody's telling me to do it. Like, especially if it doesn't feel right. Like, I came from the banking industry. And like, I don't wanna sell nobody a loan that they can't afford or, you know, like, something that they're never gonna use. But when I made my transition to becoming a real estate agent, like, I can help them, you know, from start to finish. And I, I actually enjoy that. Like, it, it's a lot, but I, I really do enjoy it. It makes me feel like my purpose is being fulfilled. And then like Mr. Brooks and Mr. Davis, like, outside of, um, being a real estate, like, the people who they are, they're always willing to help, always call away. Like, and I just feel like they're two big brothers that I needed in my life. So that's, that's why I had that. I chose. Sharona's on now.
Well, hey, 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 y'all. I am here. Are y'all ready for me?
Yeah, we ready for you. You ready?
Okay. Yeah, I'm ready. I'm sorry, I, my kids have, well, my kid, kid has me out school shopping and do my whole. I knew, today I had a re, I found out doing something today for some reason, and she, she came and forced me out, so I'm out. So we're in the car, but, um, what's the question, um, that we, that we're answering today?
So Sharona, you just, you're gonna just talk about, you know, why you chose, what, just how, how has your experience been so far? You being newly with, uh, Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm and the five-star team, like, just speak about that.
Okay. Well, um, of course, I don't know if y'all know, but I started the brokerage because of Kendra. Um, Kendra, uh, found me through a friend. And before I became a real estate agent, she, um, encouraged me to, um, get my license and so forth. And I was working on it, but I was kind of like playing around with it. But when I talked to her, the more I talked, she like, did she get your license? Did she get your license? And she was like, okay, do this, do that. And so when I got my license, I, um, I never had a mentor the whole time I had my license or anything. So Kendra was actually my mentor. She probably know it, but she was. I would call her and ask her different stuff on how to do different things. And she would gladly give me the information freely without me even like, without saying, well, hey, you know, you gotta learn this on your own. She would just give, give it to me straightforward and just give me all the tools, the information that I needed. So when she asked me to join, um, to help her with the brokerage in Dallas, I was, I was elated to leave my brokerage that I was currently at, to assist her with that. Because why wouldn't I? Because she had actually any transactions that I had did or anything I was doing here in Dallas. She was already showing me. So I was like, well, why not just, you know, start the brokerage with her or do, well, whatever she needs me to do? Because she's already, has enhanced my skills already. So then when I joined the brokerage, um, I really hadn't heard, heard about y'all's brokerage because of course I'm in Dallas. But when I read, read a lot about y'all, and then now that I'm here, when I say y'all name, before, when I was the only agent, I would say y'all name, and I would walk in rooms with different people, and they'd be like, oh, yeah, Brooks and Davis. Oh, yeah, you talking about my girl. I'm like, oh my god, like, y'all already know. So I would have to straighten up and be like, okay, let me act right, because, you know. But y'all name is very replicable, replicable here in Dallas, like, and that was another thing. And I started feeling like, okay, well, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm really on the right path now. And the professionalism that y'all show, um, even though we, we do, um, react as a family, it's still, um, like this deep connection that, um, I have with the team. I felt welcome when I first started. I was empowered, um, the training, the tools, the leadership that I received from Miss Jackie. Like, I can call her and she'd be like, hey, baby, I'm, you know, I'm on, on the dinner date with my husband. When I'm done, I got you. And she got me. Like, I've never had people that's really like there for me. Even though y'all are two, three hundred miles away, guess what? I can call y'all, and it feels like y'all are right around the corner. So this brokerage has, um, helped me a lot with my real estate goals, um, my real estate professionalism. I feel like now I'm finally investing in real estate now. I'm not just out here just saying I'm a real estate agent, not doing anything. Um, the collaborations that I'm starting to get connected to is because of y'all. Like, I met a guy who knows you, um, um, Mike, and like, he, he calls and stays on me like, like you calling him or something, like, y'all gonna, like, he, I don't know, he just holds me hostage. Because when I said your name, this man make sure that I, every, I'm posting, or he's like, hey, I ain't seen you post on social media. I'ma let Mike know. I'll get Miss Gray, and he'll call and talk to me for hours and hours and encourage me. All because he knows you. And so, um, like I said, just being a part of this brokerage has really done a lot for me. And real estate, like, it's very encouraging. I feel like now I am a real estate agent now. I don't just feel like an agent. I feel like I am a real estate agent, and I can say that with confidence and proud, I mean, with pride. Because, y'all, so I don't wanna go too far. I mean, I don't, I could go all day. But thank y'all. Yeah, thank you.
You got a room full of applauses, Sharona.
But thank you.
Alright, see, so now y'all see why that was my favorite part. I was looking forward to that part right there, right? Getting real stories, getting real feedback. Alright, let's do a round of applause for everybody that shared, um, yeah, y'all know how it is in real estate. Well, I know how it is. One of the first things that I try to break people from is talking in front of people. Like, look, you gotta talk. Like, you gotta get in front, you gotta talk to people. So, you know, we, we all know that that's not easy. I know we've heard that, what they say, the number one fear is the fear of public speaking. Even higher than the fear of death. So we definitely wanna applaud those for, for thanking, I mean, for doing it. Alright. So let's jump back into it. Alright, so let's talk a little bit about, and again, we, we talked about this, and you, you'll see the underlying theme, you know, a, a commitment to education and training and support, and business development and support has always been like a day-one focus for me personally. And I feel like that has kind of taken on, Brook, Brook, Brooks and Davis has taken on that desire for me to really be intentional about education, agent development, and things like that. You know, I tell people, and I know many of you probably heard me say it, that if I still had to work with buyers and sellers, I'd have been out of this business, right? The reason that I still do real estate is the opportunity to be a broker and the opportunity to train and develop and coach and fulfillment. So I can honestly say, 'cause some people will be, oh, man, that's just a sales pitch. You're just saying that because you're trying to recruit. No, honestly, I get a lot of fulfillment. This is why I do what I do and why I keep doing it. Um, I have a, a heart for it. So, you know, on the screen, you'll just see the many ways that we help you win at Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm. And definitely wanna encourage you all to connect it and take advantage of what you have access to. Um, as we go into the next season, as we close, we're, we're, we're working towards closing the year out strong, we're gonna continue to be very intentional about pushing these things out, right? Uh, and we're gonna be very intentional about encouraging you to take advantage of them. Because when we get into our major player conversation, and I don't know how many of you all remember what the goal of the major player was, but it's ultimately to get everybody to a point to where they're closing ten transactions a year. Like, that's the goal. Like, we want everybody to be a major player. Well, for that to happen, you gotta have a commitment to these things that we provide when it comes to education and training, when it comes to business development, and when, when it comes to the support systems um, that we coach and that we train on. So that's, that's very important. Alright, um, we, again, we do a lot. I mentioned it, I mentioned it earlier. You know, twenty-plus opportunities a month for you to plug in, right? To Sharona's point, it doesn't matter if you're in Houston, it doesn't matter if you're in Dallas, it doesn't matter if you're wherever, right? Because we do things in person, we do things virtually, like, we, we're, we're intentional about figuring out ways to make you connect. Now, something else that's very powerful, and I would, I wanna see more people take advantage of it, is with Brooks and David Signature, there's a lot of events that they do that you can take and white-label. Like, the pre-homebuyer session, you can take the pre-homebuyer session, you can put your own marketing around that, and you can push that out to your audience. You can use that as an opportunity to attract leads. The last pre-homebuyer session that Brooks and David Signature did, I don't know, Margaret, you remember how many leads we, y'all attracted? I know I put you on the spot.
Maybe twelve?
Alright, maybe twelve, right? But she really shortchanging it. It was nineteen.
Oh.
Yeah, the last pre-homebuyer session that they did, nineteen leads came out of, right? And that, but what I'm saying is, is that you could use the same event, like, the same thing that they did. You ain't even gotta come to it.
Yeah.
But you can market it. And you can get people to register. And you can get those leads as well. I know, uh, I don't know if AK is on, but I'm gonna use him in my example. What he does with the pre-homebuyer session, he, he's creating an event, right? And then he used that event, right, to get people to register. And that's how he's using the pre-homebuyer session to attract leads. Uh, we just recently had our Home Buyers Club event at D.R. Horton. Alright, that's another, again, white-labeled opportunity. We do open houses twice a month. But for Brooks and David Signature, all Brooks and David's agents can participate with the open houses, right? Right? All Brooks and David's agents. So if you wanna do an open house, if you wanna get mentored on how to do one, if you just wanna utilize it as an opportunity for you to attract business and to market it and for prospecting, right? We have the blueprint, we have the, you ain't gotta, you ain't gotta guess. All you gotta do is just follow the blueprint, right? Do what they do. Because they're proven, right? With this D.R. Horton thing, I think they, matter of fact, it was a guy today in the office that Shay was talking to and got, signed up as a buyer client from the event that we did with the D.R. Horton on Saturday. So this, it works, right? So you ain't gotta guess. You ain't gotta come up with nothing. So, uh, we just wanted to show this visual because So I we just wanted to show this visual because in for mo for many days of the month, Brooks and Davis is doing something. And if you want to take your business to the next level, this is the way that you get plugged in, get plugged into the system, get plugged into what we're pushing out. Okay? All right. All right. How many of y'all know about the money back guarantee? We know about the money back guarantee, right? We know about money back guarantee. All right. Now, listen. The reason that we are even confident enough to push something out there like this is because number one, we've already shown you all the support that we provide. Number two, being in this business for twenty years, having over a thousand transactions under my belt, I know how to make money in real estate, period. So not only do we provide the opportunity, I under I know how to do it. If a person comes in and does what we tell them to do and plugs into the things that we provide, it's no way that they're not going to be able to close a transaction within ninety days or within twelve months. If they show up, if they show up as a major player and they do those things. And we're going to get into the recommitment of the major player pledge. But if you do it, it's no doubt in my mind that we can guarantee your results. Now here's the reality. Is everybody gonna do it? No, and I already know everybody not gonna do it. And if you don't do it, then as a broker, and this is just me, I feel no obligation for your success. I'm not obligated to it, right? But now if you are doing the things that I'm telling you to do, then it's all the pressure's on me at that point, right? And I'm gonna do hell or high water, whatever it takes for you to be successful because I see that you're showing up and you're plugged in. So I definitely want to keep this in the forefront of you all's minds. I know a lot of y'all have been here longer than ninety days. Y'all have been here longer than twelve months. But I need y'all to know because y'all are talking to agents to uh Diane's point or Veronica's point, no Ashanti's point. Ashanti said she didn't have anybody to compare it to, but she's talking to agents and they're struggling. I know y'all are having those conversations with agents. So y'all need to know that, hey, I'm a part of a brokerage firm that guarantees your success. So you need to come hear them out, learn about it. If you're willing to show up, you'll be successful. So that's why we absolutely want to keep this in the front of your mind and so you can understand that it's about building trust and it's about eliminating, what's that word? Excuses. Eliminating excuses. I've been in this business long enough and let me tell you, I'm tired of hearing them. Now I'll be nice to you and I'm a smile and I ain't probably ain't gonna say this is about the only time y'all are gonna hear me say I'm tired of these excuses. I do hear them, right? But I'm tired of, right? Listen, you have everything that you need access to to be successful in this business. All you got to do is show up and do the work. You show up and do the work, you're gonna be very successful in real estate. Okay? All right. All right, next thing, this is our uh this is our breakout session? You still haven't gotten to the breakout session? You still haven't gotten to the breakout session? All right, pull your phones out. Let's go. We got another thing. Let me see, let me see. Now I've had this conversation of how y'all need to be tapping and using our uh our tools and our systems. Now I'm gonna see how many y'all are actually using and what y'all are actually using. Not me? Somebody trying to talk.
Okay, hello, everybody. I like the participation. Okay, so everybody scan this QR code and like this is very interactive and let us know which tools have you used. Yeah, which tools have you used? Even in Zoom land, y'all, scan that code and let us know which tools have you used. So we all know it's important for your brokerage to, you know, support you with some tools. Well, let me, let me, let me scan it myself.
This is business.
Okay, so so which part? So it says which part of our systems have you used the most this year? So I was just reading which tools have you used? It's a hammer, a screwdriver? No, we don't mean that. Which real estate tools have you used the most this year? Okay, we see virtual desk popped up. Wise Agent. One-on-one coaching. Training. In-person sessions slash events. Miss Jackie. Miss Jackie is the tool. Let's see. ABC follow-up. That's a good one. And group coaching, that's very beneficial, too. That looks like we got quite a few. I wish this one would poll it like the last one so we can see how many. Okay, you just scrolled up some more. Okay. Some more coaching and training and some more coaching in person. So you get access to the man himself. Let's see, Zoom, Wise Agent, social media. Ooh, walkthrough coaching at properties. That sounds good. So it looks like people have been really taking advantage of the tools that Brooks and Davis offers. Let's see, one more popped up there, one-on-one mentorship, Wise Agent, ABC follow-up, in-person training events. This person was using all of them.
Hey, keep doing it.
So it looks like the answer has slowed down. So so thank y'all for participating.
He dedicated. Who ready to do it? Right? How many more months we have left in twenty twenty-five? How many more?
Four, a little less than four. And twenty twenty-five is August already.
Yeah, but six was four is two.
We just started. We just started August, so it's five. I mean, it's five. We still got August, you know? Hey, look, the point is a little a little more than half the years behind us, right? So, you know, we have seen some momentum. We've shown you some things that we've done the first part. Uh but now it's time to double down, right? We aren't just a brokerage. We're building major players in real estate, right? So how many of y'all, how many of you all took the first major player pledge? Raise your hand. All right, first major player pledge, right? Now, how many of you all did the stuff that the major player pledged, that you pledged that you was gonna do? How many people did it, right? I didn't I don't have as many hands up, huh? I ain't got as many hands up, right? All right, well, good. The great news is is that you have an opportunity to recommit.
Good news.
That's good news. All right. So the way that we're gonna do this is we're gonna look at it, what we say we have about, you know, there's look, there was a there was a debate between six months or four months. All right, this is ninety days. Right? So that covers whichever one you choose. Who's willing to make a ninety day commitment to close their twenty twenty-five out strong? All right, all right, all right, good. All right, so this is what we're gonna do. If you did not if you did not sign the initial major player pledge, that's okay, right? The 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 QR code for the original major player pledge is on the screen, all right? Now, if you did sign the original major player pledge, then we have a QR code for recommit. And that's what we're gonna have those individuals. We're actually gonna have everybody do the recommitment. Whether you sign the original major player pledge or not, we're gonna have everybody do the recommitment. And then if you didn't sign the original one, then I want you to go back and I want you to sign, all right? Now, before we do that, I got a special person that I want to bring up and I want her to share with you. One about you've seen her earlier. You've seen her on the screen. You've seen her producing. I want her to come up and I want her to share why what we talk about and our encouragement of the major player and 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 pledging to do these things, how how she's seen these things work in her career and how how it's contributed to her success. So if you could, please, a round of applause for my favorite real estate agent all the time. Team lead of the Laquana Davis Real Team.
Okay, how are you guys? Laquana Davis. Um, thank you for having me. As it relates to, no, let me go back. I first pledged Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm in twenty fifteen. Um, and it's so funny when you think about a a major pledge because that's really what I did when I came into real estate. Uh, before we even had it. And so that's why I said that because putting it all together and speaking today, I'm realizing like that's what you did almost ten years ago was the pledge of this is how you were going to show up in the unknown. Right? So I was a social worker for twelve years before getting into real estate, didn't know nothing about real estate. Didn't have a desire about real estate. I just want to be a part of my husband's world. So that's how I started. So so when it comes to talking to agents that haven't done it before, haven't seen it before, doesn't know what it looks like, don't know what to compare it to, I started there, didn't know where to compare anything to. But what I told myself is when I left my job is that I just wanted to make sure that I can make the same income that I left behind. That was my pledge to myself. What do I need to do to make sure that at the least I can make that same income? And that decision right there allowed me to leap and jump and let it go, right? Not telling you to do it. That's what worked for me, right? And so with making that pledge to myself, I had to show up. With making that to myself. So a lot of times we're doing this pledge. We're doing it because the people around us, we may be doing it because of the height, we may be doing it because of whatever that is to you. But I'm coming to tell you to say you have to do it for yourself. There has to be something bigger. There has to be something that keeps you grounded in order to see this through to the end, right? And so that was mine. Now, the other thing, I have notes. Okay, so the major pledge. Instructions, right? The first one was following instructions. A lot of us want to go out hustling first, which is at the bottom. Well, I don't know which one was first, but I decided to go with instructions first because if you follow the instructions, then you'll go go out there and you'll get to that hustling part and you'll be able to run faster. If you go out there trying to run and you don't know what you're doing and you can't follow the instructions that's been given to you, you're gonna end up back going backwards. So instruction is very, 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 very important, even if you don't understand it, even if you don't get it, right? But just follow instruction, be very, very active. And I thought about grade school um and being coachable and teachable. What I've seen from the last major pledge to now, um just as a whole, we'll get coaching, we'll come to trainings, we're we're coming, but when we leave out, we don't do anything. Right? So when you prepare for a test, you go home and you study. When you're preparing for anything, you go home and you study. If you decide a new job, you go home, you learn about it, right? So it's more than just showing up to your coaching sessions. It's more than just showing up physically. You have to go back home and try to relearn it, one, or learn more about it so that when you come back to your next coaching session, you have something to get your coach to expound on.
Yes.
All right. So that's very, 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 very important. And you get more out of it because now you can have the conversation. It's more than just listening to it, right? So if you go home, um the success machine, when I first started, Mr. Davis and Mr. Brooks, they were not nice to me, y'all. They would say, before you come and ask me a question, did you go to the success machine? I had to go through all those. My husband's an engineer, so he details everything. I had to go filter, try to find my answer first. And then once I find my answer and had a little bit of knowledge to take it back to him, then he would answer my question. Me and Margaret did that together. You remember Margaret? She came in with me. Oh, it was seven dot training then, right? So I want to encourage you guys that even if you're showing up, even if you're doing these different things, that you have to do the things in your quiet time. You have to do things to push yourself forward when no one else is looking, right? And so that when you come to your sessions and you come to these coaching and trainings, that you can get the most out of them. Okay? And then you hustle. At that point in time, I was hustling. Now, this is when Kendra comes in because I had the Kendra knocking on doors with me in apartment complexes and we just did everything. She just let me do it. Okay, I appreciate that. But for me, I wanted to put myself in places where I can have opportunity, right? Did I know it was gonna come? No. Did I know how it was gonna work out? No. But what I did was I just showed up to the construction. Hey, how you doing, Laquana? Couples would see me out there and be like, I just saw you three times. Can you help me? Yes, I sure can, right? So make sure you're putting yourself in places to give yourself a chance to have opportunity to put your things to use, right? You can't do it behind a computer all day. You cannot do it behind your phone all day. You cannot do it behind content all day. You have to get yourself there and put yourself in a position to get the business. All right.
She did that. All right. So hope so. So look, I I'm I'm hoping that she got you riled up. So I see people had their hands. Are they trying to say something? Are they trying to ask questions, Shay? Are you if if your hand is up, are you trying to ask questions? No, you just left it up. All right. So here we go. Before I before I send y'all to the QR code, y'all finna make a public a public declaration to the universe. So everybody stand up. If you in the building, if you on Zoom, stand up, right? And for you on it, don't have y'all camera on, I can't see if you standing up, but I'm believing that you standing up. Stand up, all right? We are finna take a moment to recommit and you're not recommitting to Brooks and Davis. You are not committing to Brooks and Davis. You are committed to yourself, right? You're committed to your goals. You're committing to the community that's behind you. Right? All right. So I want you to stand up. I'm I'm inviting you to raise one hand, right? Pick whichever one you want, the right or the left, all right? And then I want you to repeat after me. All right, raise your hand. All right. I commit to my growth.
I commit to my growth.
I commit to showing up.
I commit to showing up.
I commit to closing more deals.
More deals.
To being a major player. It is official. We have recommitted. All right. So now scan this QR code. Everybody scan this QR code. It'll take about two minutes. Scan the QR code and go ahead and and fill out the form. It's a really short form.
President, so you send that to me, I'm gonna go home and send it to my wife.
It was adults. Hey, look, the next event we had, I see her and then I she be looking at me. I'm like, oh, no, yeah, the one in the gold box. The recommitment. Everybody scan that. Everybody do it. And then we'll um so so y'all y'all gave a public recommitment and now this is y'all written recommitment. I doubled y'all up on the commitment. Is there one? Is there one? Get y'all life work, get y'all real estate life work. That is funny. All right, go ahead. Everybody scan it. How we looking on Zoom? All right, this is y'all first test. See if y'all not following instructions like my wife talking about. Okay, Miss Shay, you about to be here. You about to be next. Let's see here. Let's see how we gonna do this. All right, Jess, I'm about to pull you in for the breakout session. So get an idea of who all is on Zoom and how you need to do your workouts. Now ideally, we want to do three to five people per room. Now ideally, we wanna do three to five people per room. And then we need to figure out. Jess is handling the online stuff. So we could add two groups here and then one group on the other side.
Oh, yeah. Sure, just have them count off the first five, go over there, right?
Okay, so they can just stay on Zoom and do breakout, they ain't gotta go in a breakout room. Okay, did everybody finish their major player players two point O? Y'all all in? We all in? Alright, so we're finna move to our next phase. Uh, first of all, man, uh, give yourself a round of applause. Um, y'all getting y'all real estate lives together today? Um, okay, so now we're finna move into a breakout, a little quick break. Uh, so Jess, Jess who's online, she's gonna help facilitate things for, uh, our friends that are on Zoom. And then Ms. Jackie's gonna handle everything, so y'all listen to her instructions.
Alright, so I, first I had did these five in a breakout room, but I would like a more leadership person with that one, so you five. Laquana with this group right here, and you guys can go in the other room over there for the, the office for the breakout room. And you should have three questions that I'm gonna ask.
Well, they're, they're gonna, actually, before you go to the new breakout, go ahead and scan this QR code. So you can already have them. Yeah, go ahead and scan that, cuz those are the questions that you're gonna talk.
Those are your three questions.
Yeah, during your breakout, so go ahead and scan it. So these are the things that we want you to discuss while in your breakout. And let's see, six minutes, we're just gonna break out for six minutes. I was asking you two questions.
So you hear one now?
Well, once you answer the first one, then it'll, it'll take to the minute.
You can go now.
So it's a group discussion?
It's a group discussion.
As a group, y'all gonna talk, so once you answer the first question, then the second question's gonna come up, and then y'all can just kinda talk through both of them.
Alrighty, so this side over here. Now it's gonna split them up so they can talk. Elijah, Laquana, Kevin, Rick and Margaret, and the rest of us over here. But Kendra, you on this side, okay.
Alright, I see one question, I think we're gonna have to have you all mute.
And Mark, who we got over here?
And then online, so Jess, you handling online, it says it's only like four people, so y'all, Jess is gonna be the facilitator with you all that are online, so y'all talk amongst yourselves. And like I said, it'll be six minutes, we'll do this for six minutes, I'm gonna set the timer, and then we're gonna come back from our breakout and we're gonna talk about it.
Okay, that's fine, can you all hear me? Alright, perfect, uh, Mike, I have a quick question, you all are only saying one question, correct?
Yeah, I wanna see the first one too.
Alright, Michael, if I can get you all to mute, so we can have our discussion.
Can you all hear me in the, Michael?
Ms. Jackie, can y'all mute y'all's screen?
Alright, perfect. No? Awesome. Alright, well, great, well, for all the family online, my name's Jess, I'm definitely behind the scenes type of, uh, working with the, with the, uh, leader, in leadership with the brokerage. So the question we're gonna go over right now is, how have you used our education system this year? Trainings, workshops, coaching, what were some of you all's responses for that?
Well, I'll go, um, for me, I'm pretty much brand new, I've been here about a month, so, um, I've been doing a lot of the mentor meetings and, um, also going to the events that's posted. Um, so just kinda getting more, a good idea of how things are done and just kinda seeing how everybody and, and being able to meet some more people on the team as well, so.
That's awesome. So how are you keeping up with, um, what's going on? That's just my, I'm curious. Like, what's your go-to? Is it the group me, uh, where you get your information? Is it Facebook, Instagram? Is it, how are you staying locked in with everything?
I'm in the group meets all the time.
Alright, well, thank you for sharing your name, cuz I couldn't see who is actually.
Jessica as well.
Alright, Jessica, perfect, we've been interacting. Alright, perfect, well, great. Alright, who's next?
Diana. I, I have been using all of them, the workshops, I go to the training, I go to the events. So I incorporate all of them in my daily routine.
Is there one that you, that, um, you've seen that you utilize more in the other, even though you use them all?
I would say going to the events.
Got you.
Yeah, face to face.
Good stuff, good, good, good. Well, thank you for sharing that, Diana, appreciate that.
I'll go ahead and go next, um. Hi, hey, y'all, hey. So I would say I could, I could have done better, it's crazy cuz we're already in August, like the years are also. Um, but most importantly, I think for me, the chickens and the Zoom trainings that I've had with Ms. Jackie, especially with the updates that are coming from Trek, uh, and all of those types of things, I think is that on the top of my list of all the things, um, that I can think of off the top of my head. The, the coaching meetings, yeah.
Alright, well, let me, am I ask you the same question? How are you staying, um, how are you, how are you, um, knowing what's going on with the brokerage? I don't know why I can't. Okay, good, good, good.
But I do have to be intentional, and I'm, this is my transparency, I have to be intentional with all the different groups within the group, if that makes sense, like, making sure that I'm, I'm checking all of the.
They categorized, right? Good stuff, no, like, it's just good that you're using it, cuz that is definitely like our little billboard of what's going on within, um, the company. Alright, who's next? Well, thank you.
Hey, y'all, so I've been attending the group, uh, coaching as well as Tuesday night, um, trainings with Ms. Jackie. And I say inform, uh, via the group me messages, is there another location that I can find it? Cuz sometimes you have to scroll like far up if you missed a day or two.
The group me is a great place, but you know, we always, um, also post the events like on our social media and things like that, and then the link that you actually RSVP will have all the events that are coming up as well. But yeah, you're in good hands, when you're in the group me, uh, just go to Brooks and Davis Real Estate Firm Events, and that'll just take you directly to everything that's going on as far as events. Good stuff. Anyone else like to share? Alright, not interrupt me if you do, but I do have a question, um, since I, I don't think they've gone to another slide. How, um, have any of you all utilized?
Jess, were y'all able to get to the next slide?
No, we don't see it, or if I, if we did, it's the same QR code from, as far as I know.
So if you're already in the mentee meter, you should have a pop-up that says skip ahead.
Alright, Jessie, I'm just seeing it now, so what, okay, cool, thank you, let's move on. What's actually working for you right now in, can you all mute again, Shay? What's actually working for you right now in growing your business? If there's anyone that hasn't shared yet, that would like to go forward, not, or continue with those that have. So what act, what's actually working for you right now in growing your business?
For me, I would say, um, open houses, doing open houses. Um, getting, getting in front of people and getting more leads.
Nice, have you set like a goal of how many open houses and stuff you wanna do, or right now you're just kinda getting active, where, where's your?
I haven't really set a goal, but I, I usually, if I'm not doing something on, if I'm not out of town or whatever, I'm usually doing, uh, open house every, every weekend, yeah.
Got you, that's good. How about first, um, someone else?
I've been attracting a lot of leads via social media, so that's been working for my business.
That's good, that's really good. Have you know, have they been friends of yours, or are they more so?
Yeah, they've always been like a friend of a friend, uh, but they just contact through social media, so yeah.
Very good, very good. A lot of people struggle with, um, leads from social media, so the fact that you have some traction, even though there are people that you're familiar with, that's still very good, and you have a presence there. Alright, who else?
So I'll share this, it's Rania.
Hey, Rania.
So what I'll share about is kinda like what Ms. Davis had said earlier, is like, you know, I was type of person, I gotta get out there and hustle, I gotta do it now, but this year, I just took a step back and like, let me actually listen instead of trying to run, you know, first. And then I got a lot more traction, so just, and just doing exactly what was said, I got a lot more leads, um, um, I got actually somebody going, they were supposed to go to the closing table in August, but they pushed it to September, so that's great for me. And then I got two more that I know is gonna be a sure thing, so just taking that step back and actually listening to, cuz I was the same way, that I got, if I, you know, when I got the military, it's like, I gotta, I gotta make that money that I had, you know, I gotta make that money, but you know, taking a step back, it actually does work, and listening to what the training advice is being put out.
Yeah, no, that's real, cuz I mean, I think that we, we do struggle with that as entrepreneurs, like when we get excited about something, an idea or something that's new, and we wanna like, even Laquana said, um, she had to just stop and follow the instructions versus trying to get straight to the hustle. And a lot of times, I know for myself, and I know a lot of other entrepreneurs, they're the same way, they have to step back. You guys, it's like, we go straight up, and then we find ourselves having to always take those steps back and follow those instructions and just get down to the real foundation, cuz if the foundation is not right, uh, the whole course gets, just really gets off course, so.
Alright, perfect, but thank you, Ryan, for sharing that, for sure. Um, I don't see a third question just yet, so. We'll wait for their instruction. But I do wanna encourage you all, like I had mentioned before, well, I've been with the company, I, I always forget, but I know it's been like nine years or plus or around there, and, um, I started off, um, working kinda similar to Shay in her role, um, as the, uh, company manager, but then headed over to, um, BND TV where we do a lot of the podcasts, I wanna encourage you all, definitely use that also as a tool on Monday nights with those questions with Mr. Davis as well.
Jess, y'all sound interesting. We should've been in y'all breakout session.
That's funny.
Alright, we about to jump into it, so first of all, thank everybody for participating in that. Um, so, uh, the reason that we're doing these mentees is because it allows us to capture it, right? So now, after this is all said and done, we can go back and we can see kinda what everybody responded with. And then it helps the brokerage firm as we progress and continue to build our program and things like that. Uh, but what we really wanted to do with that exercise was just to pull y'all into a, a conversation around those two elements, right? So what I would like to do is maybe for about a minute or so, ask for people to kinda share what their answer was for the two questions. So, the first question was, how have you used our education system this year? Trainings, workshops, and coaching? So either online or in person, who wants to share what was discussed in, uh, your breakout? As it relates to how you've used, or how anybody had used our education system this year, trainings, workshops, and coaching? So who wants to, who wants to share? How, how your, your breakout session?
Oh, what came out of ours, um, just how we use the education system and the training, is that it allows us to, um, not only learn, but also gain resources and connections as relates to how to build the business and who's all involved, like title companies, sectors, uh, mortgage companies, and, um, the more you learn, the more you can take back to your clients and educate them because you be.
So from this group, what are the one thing you learned? Yeah, y'all moved around on me again.
But, um, we also mentioned like, the one-on-one coaching and mentorship, that's just a good resource when you're like out working to like have someone you can like call just for guidance, reassurance, and then making sure you're like moving in the right. Direction, yeah.
Love that. Let's, let's let the online team be there, they, they're super anxious.
Alright, Jess, and your team, can y'all share what you came up with for the first answer?
Yeah, a lot of it was, uh, the events that we have going on, the coaching, um, as well, and, uh, the information, um, to know what's going on as far as, and the brokerage was gathered through group me, is, has been a good resource to know what's going on and to attend the coachings.
So this segment, that's how they respond to that.
What's actually working for you right now in growing your business, this group, the Kendra's group, anybody from the Kendra group and all the Kendra?
That's the success machine. Yeah, I really liked the online aspect, it would be like a podcast.
Success in real estate.
Anybody, anybody would like to add? Okay, the next group? What is actually working for you right now in growing your business?
Um, so we said, things off of mind, um, nurturing your sphere of influence, content, and networking.
Okay, very good. Online, Jess, open, uh, open houses and social media. Well, I'm gonna ask this third question, and. I'm gonna ask this one question, cuz I think it's great. What you want support, resource, you wish you had more access to? So you, you feel that you get enough of everything at BND and Brooks and Davis? Okay, this group over here, any source you wish you had more access to? Well, that means we're doing everything right, so.
Maybe like a TC.
Online, did y'all have any, um, I think I would, I would just, and not saying that we don't already have.
You wish you had more access to?
I think it would be good if we had a, um, social media content workshop quarterly. Like the step-by-step for some of us, cuz I get that some of the things are made available to us, but the step-by-step and to talk out loud some of the issues that we might be having.
Oh, you want like a, a training type, well, like a weekly training on social media, affordable.
Do you need more hands-on, like walking through actual steps? Okay, understood. Okay, well, Evans, you had your hand raised. Did you wanna say something? If not, I
That's my my number one struggle, I think, is the TC that helps me get, you know, either help.
Open your mind or your pocketbook. You got it. Got you. Turn it back over to the CEO. Thank you.
So um I before I move to the next thing, I wanna kind of, I wanna speak to the social media. Maybe what will, and I'll talk to Jess about this. We've done sessions, social media wise, we recorded them, they're on our YouTube channel. But maybe what we can do is take those sessions and put together a social media kit with just those sessions where we discuss social media. And people could use those, you know, those videos because we talk in in those sessions, I know, we talk specifics of what people could do and what was working and 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 good best practices. Uh but it'll it'll be more user friendly if we could just take those sessions, put them in like a kit or something and all of them together and then you could just watch it. So uh Jess and I actually meet today at three o'clock and we'll, we'll talk about that. Alright, well, good. Well, give yourselves a round of applause for participating. In that part of the town hall meeting. Man, we getting there, man. We're getting to the end of it. Alright, so now I want us to go into some recognize, some recognition and some celebration. This is some recognition and some celebration. Alright, so now, everybody that's been recognized and acknowledged in today's town hall meeting, even as people as I bring these up, everybody as a show of appreciation, you know, I was really trying to figure out, trying to think of what what we could do, what we could offer, what we could provide as it aligns to what we're really pushing. One of the things that we are really pushing is our Brooks and Davis merch merchandise, going to the merch store and things like that. So what we want for everybody that gave their testimonies, for everybody that participated, uh we're gonna offer a thirty percent off anything that's on the merch store. Anything, thirty percent for everybody. So as we go into this, yeah, clap Margaret. Now, here's the thing, you gotta, it expires on August ninth, so you got about three days. Go ahead and make that purchase. We gonna send a QR, you'll get a QR, you'll get the coupon code for when you check out. And then that's how you'll get your, your uh you'll get your discount applied. Alright, so alright, let's jump into it. Who do we, who we wanna talk, who we wanna recognize today? So I came up with some categories. The first category is I call it the show up awards. The show up awards. So I want to acknowledge some people. Uh he was here, Mr. Rick Davis, Mr. Rashad Garrett and Mr. Yes to Real Estate, Mr. Andre. Definitely wanted to uh, the reason that I thought that they were good for the show up award is because when it comes to because not only do they show up, they're also look, always looking for opportunities to help, right? You know, I think, you know, Andre, all the time he's asking, hey, you know, Mr. President, like what can I do? How can I do more? I know we were in LA. We were, we were having that conversation about just him wanting to offer more value to this real estate firm. And the same thing with Rick and what he's doing online with the different podcasts and the different shows, um as well as Rashad. And the thing about Rashad is, is that he's only, I don't even know if he's even hit his second year in real estate yet, but he was just, I did it. Okay, so so barely, so barely two years in real estate. But one of the things that I can say about him is, is that he did hit the ground running. Uh and he and he is, even with our group coaching, he comes to the group coaching sessions a lot, and then he's al- always looking to provide insight and brought and and provide advice to those that that are our group coaches. So uh let's go ahead and apply. I know I saw Rashad on there earlier, but I need to get back to it. But this is, this is I'm still here. And like I said, you guys are gonna get that coupon code um for thirty percent off. Alright, my consistency spotlight. Alright, my consistency spotlight. Um so I know you all have heard me talk a lot about uh but first I'll start with with Margaret and Shay. Uh the reason that, yeah, there we go. You know, my wife talked about me being an engineer earlier and 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 uh one, another thing about me is that I'm, I love a routine. Like, boy, if you just give me something that I can just do over and over and rinse and repeat, baby, I'm in love. So some of the things that I teach uh and that we teach when it comes to the daily success habits tracker, when it comes to um the morning huddles, like we're very routine in that. And what I can say about these young ladies is, is that they are consistent with, right along with me, right? Uh we've absolutely gotten to the point to where I don't even have to ask to see their daily success habits tracker. I know they've already filled it out. I don't even have to, like now it's to the point to where it's some of our huddles, many of our huddles, I'm not even participating in the huddles no more. They can literally run it all on their own. That's just how consistent and how they've been showing up for the for for the brokerage firm. Now, it's a lot easier for me to give that award to the people that are in my team because obviously I I have that much interaction, right? Assistance, right? This is our, this is our overseas Brooks and Davis team. I think Conchita's still on, but I definitely wanted to uh uh recognize the work that they do. Um and again, they show up. Uh if you've never, if what you may not know about where they're from, they're in the Philippines, the Philippines weather is very sketchy, right? And so as far as like rolling blackouts and um and just illnesses and typhoons, like it's just so many challenges that they face. Uh but even with that, they're they're very consistent as far as showing up and being ready to go. Uh unfortunately, Sharita wasn't able to be with us today because she's dealing with migraines. Um but she still reached out, like she wanted to be, and I'm the one that told her, like, no, just take the day off, get you some rest, right? Uh another thing you need to understand is, is that like it is one forty-seven PM here, but it is two forty-seven AM in the Philippines. So Conchita is two forty-seven in the morning and then she's working. They start at nine o'clock with us. Uh nine AM here is ten PM there and they're working overnight, right? So definitely didn't wanna take these things for granted and wanted to recognize and spotlight them for their, for them showing up every day and being a part of all the things that we're able to do at Brooks and Davis. So let's give them a round of applause. Give all of our consistency spotlights a round of applause. Alright, my most improved recognition. Alright, matter of fact, these two young ladies actually work together, right? Uh one mentors the other, but I definitely want to spotlight this piece, um you know, not getting into anybody's business, but Deion, seeing how hard you work through and getting yourself to a point to where you can get back on track. And I know this year, looking at production, looking at what you're closing like, you know, you you overcame it, man. And just really wanted to just shout you out publicly because we saw how you bounced back. And then the same thing with Chloe, you know, Chloe's been with us for a while. Um she hasn't been as active or engaged, like for me to see it, but I know she's doing work because I see the CDA. And then every now and again, she'll run into something or she'll send an email. So I know she's working behind the scene and I know she's working in tandem with Deion, so they're doing some good things together. So I definitely wanted to acknowledge both of you all to see how y'all are improving and progressing for twenty twenty-five. So Alright, and then finally, wanted to shout out the leadership team, right? These, let let me tell you, y'all really don't know how hard y'all leadership team work. Yeah, yeah, give them another round of applause. Because your your leadership, I ask, I ask a lot of the leadership team. Just ask Ms. Jackie, because I know she will let you know that I ask a lot of my leadership team. Um but the leadership team does an excellent job. A lot of what you see, a lot of how we frame, what we've been able to show, the wins, the things that we've talked about here today in this town hall meeting, it all falls on the shoulders of your leadership team, right? I absolutely do not do this on my own. I have a very strong team and it's something that I brag about to other brokers. Other brokers and other brokerages and other companies, uh they always ask me like, how y'all doing all this? How you pushing all this stuff? How you did this, how you did that? And I'm like, look, I got Sean leadership team. And that's who I lean on, that's who I rely on. So absolutely, whenever I get an opportunity where I can shout them out uh and tell them thank you for all the things that they do and the roles that they play at Brooks and Davis to help us do what we've achieved over the last seventeen years and seventeen years into the future. So if you could, please give a round of applause to the Brooks and Davis leadership team. Everything that they've done. Whichever. No, it was seventeen in January, so next January will be eighteen. Alright, so um we got ten minutes and look, I I honestly do believe I can get through the rest of this stuff in ten minutes. Alright, just give you some quick reminders of what we have, right? Uh B and D TV. If you have not been on any of the podcasts, you are doing your own self disservice. We do the podcast, like there are opportunities um through the Realtor Life Podcast, we have, we've had special guests on Monday Night Live Talk through uh the Prime Real Estate Network. The one thing that I know is experts get interviewed. I'm gonna say it again. Experts get interviewed. So we have platforms where you can come on and we'll interview you. So now you could take that piece of marketing and you can sit in that through your audience and it positions you. Everybody say position. It positions you as an expert in your, around your sphere of influence, which is what you wanna do. So let's take advantage of it, right? It's really easy. Shay, how easy is it to get booked on these this program? Like, what do they have to do to do it? Like, do they have to jump through hoops? Do they have to beg? Do they have to pay any money? Like, what do they have to do to get on these shows?
See, they just have to call the office and say, hey, I wanna be on the podcast.
Is that all they have to do? All they gotta do is call out and we get them booked. Wow. Wow, indeed. So take advantage of that. Alright, um the Houston Real Estate Channel. How 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 many of you all knew about the Houston Real Estate Channel? Alright, if you don't know about the Houston Real Estate Channel or you have not subscribed to the Houston Real Estate Channel, scan that QR code and subscribe to it. Why is the Houston Real Estate Channel important? Because There we go. Alright, why? Because you can use this as an opportunity to send it to your buyers, right? The one thing that we know about buyers is, is that they're they're always looking for different in different areas. We, what we've done is, we've taken video, we've made video content of different areas in and around Houston, Texas. So if if you have a client that's interested in a particular area, it's gonna make you look really, really good if you can send them a link to a video that talks about the particular area that that they're interested in. Or if you have somebody that's thinking about relocating and maybe you have a favorite area, then now you can say, look, check this area out. This is a really nice area. Here's some issue around it. So it's a, it's a great resource and a great tool that you can send to make you look more attractive as a real estate professional, right? Um our goal is to add a new video every couple of weeks. Uh we haven't added any new videos here soon because we were working through some other things, but we are gonna get back to it. But even with that, I believe we have about fifteen videos that are actually on uh the Houston Real Estate Channel already. So ta- take advantage of this tool and uh utilize it to send it to your buyers and leverage.
Who puts the videos up? I was just, I feel like, have you considered letting your agents make videos highlighting various areas?
I would love, we would love that.
Good idea, y'all.
I think that's a good idea too, y'all. I think that'd be nice. Do that. Alright, Jess, put that down, Jess. We gonna talk about that too at three o'clock. Alright, what Mackenzie said, if y'all didn't hear it, was about the agents creating area videos. And then we those and added them to the Houston Real Estate Channel as well, in addition to the videos that we're posting. So I think that would be amazing. Alright, okay. How many of you all knew we had more than one office? How many? Okay, put your hands down. How many of you all have been to the West Office? Okay, if you haven't been to the West Office, yes, all right. Ms. Jackie, she handles the things at our West location and our programming at our West location. Uh we do, we do work to have at least one event per month at the West location as we continue to build the West location to get things going. Uh but we do have West, uh two locations. Now, we were able to hear from Sharona Gray, who is in Dallas. We have a couple of other agents in Dallas as well. So we have a footprint in Dallas, but we don't have a location in Dallas, right? Yes, yes, I love that. Yes, yes. We are officially in Dallas, though. Alright, uh merch store. Merch store, alright, so how many of y'all been to the merch store? Anybody been to the merch store? Alright? You should go to the merch store. It's really easy to get to. Let me show you how easy it is. Don't look at this, that's wrong. That link is wrong. But Sharita was sick, so she couldn't fix it. So I had to leave it up there. Alright, but um really easy to get to the merch store. Go to the Brooks and Davis website. How many people know how to go to the Brooks and Davis website? Okay, go to the Brooks and Davis website. When you get there, there's a tab that says shop. And all you gotta do is click on the tab that says shop. Alright, so Brooks and Davis website, go to the tab. So when, for those that were acknowledged and you get your coupon for thirty percent off, all you gotta do is go to the Brooks and Davis website, press shop, and you got to uh August ninth, when? August ninth, right? For you to get that discount for for your your recognition for today's town hall meeting. Okay, um the next thing is upcoming programs. I don't have my August calendar. I don't have an August calendar yet, so I really can't go into much with what's coming up. What I, what I will encourage you to do though, for you all that have turned your notifications off on group meeting, turn them back on. So you can know what's going on, right? Y'all just don't know how many conversations I had with agents and they'd be like, bitch, I didn't know. Did y'all send that out? When did we do that? Like, what do you mean? Turn your notifications on, okay? Because when we promote stuff, especially in house, listen, you may get a text, group me, email, a email from Gmail, a email from, you might get a Google Voice text. We gonna let, the one thing you not gonna be able to say is that we did not tell you that we had this coming up because we want y'all to participate and we want y'all to engage. But the easiest way to stay connected is in the group meeting, alright? We do our best to eliminate just dialogue. Because I know for me, I I'll admit it too, the the last thing I, what I don't really like is when there's a group and somebody gets into this conversation inside of the group and you got all these things going on. Yeah, I I so I get it, right? So and that's not what our group meeting is for. It's not for dialogue. It's really for making everyone aware and us all staying connected company-wide. So I do my best to police that. But that is the best way to stay up to speed on what we have coming up uh uh and anything. So um don't, I don't necessarily have any announcements either. Um I, in orientation, this is something that we give out. It's our link tree. I encourage you to get the link tree and save it as a bookmark on your phone. I know on my phone with my Safari, this link tree is one of my bookmarks. I go to this link tree a lot too because I don't, sometimes I need access to things and I need a quick place to find it. So all things Brooks and Davis is on this link, on this link tree. So make it, make, put it somewhere to where it's easy for you to capture it. Because if you need something, nine times out of ten, it's gonna be in one or two places. It's either gonna be on this link tree or it's gonna be in your success in real estate machine, right? Alright, so what what y'all should do before y'all call Shay is check the link tree or check the success in real estate machine for what it is that you're looking for. Then if you can't find it, call Shay. And then if you can't call, if you can't get Shay, then call me. Y'all be trying to make me the first phone call. Now, don't call me first. Do this or do that, alright? So we have that and uh boom, that's it. I told you I could do it in ten minutes. So thank you for the town hall meeting. Um in addition to Shay, did you get everybody that attended online and in person? The reason, another reason I wanted Shay to do that is because everybody just for attending the town hall meeting.
Thirty percent off?
Fifteen. Fifteen. We are gonna send everybody that attended the town hall meeting today a coupon for fifteen percent just for as an appreciation for you all being involved today uh and for what you contributed. So how do y'all feel about the town hall? How did y'all feel about that? Yes, yes, yes. This is how we're gonna do things moving forward, more engaging, less of me standing up here talking, alright? Alright, well, we got plenty of food here. Uh we have the room till for another hour. So if y'all wanna hang out and y'all wanna just network and eat, we can do that while we set things down. I do have group coaching, yes. And I am going on group coaching. Alright.
Alright, thank you all for joining. Y'all are dismissed. Enjoy the rest of y'all.
Alright, thank you all for joining, y'all are dismissed, enjoy the rest of y'all's day.